Councilwoman Pines, do you have a statement about the pending lawsuit against your fellow councilmember Purvis right here in the city regarding malicious libel? Do you have a statement? Are you afraid you're next with a lawsuit because there's pending allegations against you for harassment and targeting?
I'm not afraid, thank you.
Why did you attack your fellow member, uh, councilmember Myers tonight regarding a city, or excuse me, a citizen budget oversight committee? Are you afraid of accountability? Or did you attack her at the behest of your city manager? You were pretty vile to her up there. No comment on the pending lawsuit? None? You're not afraid you're next? No comments? None at all? And there's your fellow councilmember people. Can't even answer a question. Bye, have a good evening! Good luck on the lawsuit! Good evening and welcome to the Just Danny Show. Hope you enjoyed that clip we started out with tonight. More on that in just a bit. Now, tonight's show is gonna be packed with a lot of information. I do have a lot of clips from the shitshow last night, which is the city council meeting. And after I show each clip, I will be discussing, discussing it and help breaking it down. First up, the first clip I'm gonna be showing is Ms. Charlene Forth going up to public comments. Now, if you're aware of her, she's very vocal against the city government, um, and has been for quite some time. And she likes to go up specifically and get after Mayor Murray for a plethora of reasons, but specifically this one last night was in regard to the Florida statute on, uh, public meetings. Because as you are aware, Murray, uh, by the help of the city attorney who crafted this little spiel that Murray reads prior to every public comment sesh at every council meeting, um, she feels it's unconstitutional. And it certainly is a deterrent, a deterrent for sure, uh, but she goes up there and tries to school them, and then their response back is quite comical, and you just have to take a look for yourself.
Ms. Harrison Forth, DeSoto Street, Claremont. And Paula, how true. Things that have been coming out of your mouth attacking people up here speaking, you should've been gone a long time ago. Um, I'm gonna start again now that the election is over, out of respect. And again, I'm gonna put you on the record, Mayor. You're the one that asked for this, 'cause I found it out, uh, where you read this little spiel up here, that to avoid disruption of the meeting, speakers should avoid inappropriate language, personal attacks, derogatory statements, and direct comments to the council. Everyone's requested to be respectful of each other, even when we disagree. And then you say it again, everyone should avoid personal attacks and derogatory statements. You couldn't say it once, twice. I want everybody in this hall to know, everybody that's watching live streaming with Southlake TV, that is trying to skirt, that is violating the Florida statute law. You can call, I've told you this, two-headed animals, stupid, dumb idiots, whatever you wanna do. Even the Constitution backs that up, the right to criticize your government and whatever. You need to knock it off. So every time you're gonna keep it here, somebody's gotta get up here and do the right thing. Because that's what you're trying to do, is let people be tricked into not saying what they want. 'Cause I've heard people say this and see this back here and mention it in the back room. "Oh, well, I was gonna say they had done this, this, and this." So I'm putting you on record again, you're violating. And I guess Mr. Manzares, from what I understood, helped you to draft this? That's what I was told. I don't know if that's true or not. Is that true, Mr. Manzares? Okay, you did not, or did?
I did draft it.
You did draft it? Okay, well, I'm gonna say it again on the record, as you know it, Judge, federal Judge, Marcia Howard, you had a problem knowing about what constitutional law was about freedom of speech for Bees Auto. Do you not understand that this is trying to skirt the law and it's trying to trick people? It's not right. But you had a problem with that before, too. So, I'm gonna keep reminding you every time. And I don't know why you did it, when you've already seen that people have attacked you before for speaking out and saying things. It's wrong. I'm gonna keep saying it, so people will know that they can come up here until you take this out of here and put it back the way it should've been. Nothing more, nothing less.
Okay, I'm gonna stop it right there. The statute that is being questioned here is Florida statute 286 dot 0114 specifically, in regard to public meetings, et cetera. Again, I've dissected this Florida statute several times for several years, um, and then, of course, Murray, just over a year ago, started this spiel again crafted by our city attorney. Now, in this specific statute, I just wanna set the preface for this statute, and then, and then I'll play their responses, which, which are quite hilarious. It does not prohibit a board or commission from maintaining orderly conduct or proper decorum in a public meeting. Okay? It doesn't prohibit them from doing that, so they can, they can maintain orderly conduct or proper decorum. But the question is, like art, it's subjective. But what is well documented, uh, via the courts in this matter, is that stomping, threatening, whether that's verbally or with hand gestures, uh, and screaming is disorderly. But mere words are not. Mere words. And I've said this repeatedly, mere words are not disorderly. So yes, I can walk up there and call Michelle a fat sweaty pig. Uh, I can call disabled Mike, uh, stupid as a box of rocks, 'cause he is. I can call Bourbon Jim names. Uh, I can call Murray the most ignorant motherfucker I've ever seen or heard before. Well, I couldn't say motherfucker, but I could say, you know, you are the most ignorant, stupidest person that I've ever met, and you speak like an idiot. And there's nothing they can do, because it's been well documented by courts, case law, that mere words, mere words are not disorderly, um, and does not violate decorum. Mere words. Again, I'm gonna kill you, I'm gonna beat the shit out of you. Threatening, yes. Stomping your feet and throwing a temper tantrum, making noise like that, yes, that's disruptive. Um, flipping them off, that's, that's disruptive, according to case law and court's opinions, okay? But as far as anything outside of that, mere, mere words, I could roll my eyes, is completely fine. Now, again, the statute does say that they have the right, they're not prohibited to, uh, request decorum and maintaining orderly contact. But any kind of policy forbidding quote-unquote "personal attacks" falls short of that mark. Okay? Yes, and you're gonna find out in this next clip that they, they are adamant that, oh, we use the word "request." We request. We're not saying you cannot, we're not prohibiting you. We are using the word "request." So this is their, um, way to skirt the issue. But Ms. Forth is right in her speech where she says it tricks the people. And I'll get more into that in just a moment. I'm gonna go ahead and play their response in this next clip. Take a look.
Well, let me, let me go ahead and address that, 'cause I wanna address that issue and everything. I asked her to go, please, if you go back and read, read that comment, and nowhere in there where I say you cannot allow, or say you're not allowed to say anything, we ask you not to. And that's not, and the reason I asked for it is because not so much what you get up here and call me, because you continually come in this council, uh, week after week after week and call me all kind of names. I can hear that's what you call me, see? And you can talk to me any kind of way you want, it's not gonna bother me too much. I did it out of respect for everyone out there in the public, okay? 'Cause I don't think it's fair for them to come in here and try to enjoy a council meeting, and then they have to listen to all this verbiage and everything else, because you have some personal vendetta against someone. And that's why it's in there. It's not out of trying to eliminate what you wanna say to us, 'cause, I mean, I am an elected official, and I, I can take whatever you have to say, okay? It's you all, you, man, that can't take when somebody come back at you. And that's, that's one of the reasons I had it put in there. Not so much as to protect us, but more or less out of respect for the people in, in the, in the audience out there, for the residents. They don't need to hear all this, this foul language and everything else, because you got a personal vendetta against somebody up here on the council, okay? Yes, sir, Mr. Purvis?
Thank you, Mayor. A few of you in the audience, as well as myself, and maybe one or two up here, can recall the days when such a statement was unnecessary? Matter of fact, it would've been unheard of in the days of Hal Turville, to have to read such a statement before a public meeting. This all came about with the constant abrasive, abusive verbiage that began to be used during Gail Ash's term as mayor. And one night, unbeknownst, as far as I can determine to this day, she sprang upon the existing council at that time, the first iteration of this now opening statement. It evolved over a period of years. If I had to take a guess, I'd say this is probably the fourth or fifth iteration. But go back to the reason for having to make this statement at the beginning of a public meeting. It's not because of this council, it's not because of this mayor, it's not because of this city manager, it's because of the viciousness and venom that has slowly but surely crept under the covers of the Claremont public meetings. I hope I live long enough to see no need for such a statement, but I doubt that that will happen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And again, I, you know, um, in no way are we trying to prohibit free speech. Um, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read from state law what it says in terms of what a, a body can and cannot do.
And just so, and to clarify, I did help work with the city council, the mayor specifically, with regard to that statement. That statement was written to be consistent with the Public Participation Act. I am completely unaware of any statutes that have been alleged to have been violated by this, by the, by the city with regard to that statement. I will stand, talk to you further and say that under this, under the state law, the previously mentioned Public Participation Act, that's been basically thrown at the city in the past, that law specifically allows for the city council, the city mayor, or any, any governmental entity to maintain proper conduct and decorum for the meeting. The language specifically says, "With regard to the Public Participation Act," which is the act that guarantees every member of the public be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before a board or commission. It also says that this section does not prohibit a board or commission from maintaining orderly conduct or proper decorum in a public meeting. And as the mayor pointed out, nowhere in that statem is that prohibiting anybody from addressing the city council, from criticizing the city council, disagreeing with the city council, or any other person that speaks to the council. But it does provide authority for the council to, to control the meeting, to, to maintain orderly conduct or proper decorum, which is what it says in that statement.
And we specifically, when we wrote that, said "we request." "We request." There's nothing in the statement requiring, it specifically says "we request."
Okay, so let's break this down, shall we? So first of all, for Murray to say that this request is actually for the audience members so they can thoroughly enjoy the city council meetings is horseshit. You know it, I know it, and certainly Murray knows it. Complete and, and utter horseshit. And then for him to continue on that it protects the audience also from vulgar language is laughable. Do you know why that is laughable? Because I, up until about a year ago, I was filming essentially every single city council meeting unless, you know, I was out of town or ill, uh, for approximately close to four years. Not once during public comments did somebody go up there and use vulgar language to attack council or anybody else. There was one instance where a citizen used vulgar language up there, and they thought it was just so fucking adorable. Let me take you back to when Gail was the mayor and we had our old council up there. This is back when douchebag Darren Johnson was opening up CBC, and they were discussing, uh, it was something about his parking lot. Um, he hadn't quite opened yet, he was just about to open, and they were speaking about the parking lot. So this was years ago when Gail was still mayor. And he had the word "shit" fly out of his mouth. Some of you might remember this. And actually, if I had all my old videos from back in the day, I would've showed you the clip. I would've went dug back and showed you the clip. But he said "shit," and everybody just thought it was so fucking cute. "Oh, look at Darren Johnson, he's so cute." "Oh," everybody giggled, the entire, the entire room giggled. It was just so hilarious, right? But it just depends on who uses that vulgar language, right? Now, while I wore on that same topic, who in that room does in fact use vulgar language? It's not the participants in the public comments, as in citizens. Who is it? They actually sit up on the dais. Let me refresh your memory. It's Purvis. If anyone up there uses vulgar language, it is Purvis. Now, what words have flown out of his mouth? Hell, damn, bitching, the word bitching, and pissed. "I'm pissed off, that pisses me off." He has used every single term that I just said, every single word that I just said. So if anyone, "Mayor Murray," is using vulgar language in that city chambers, council chambers, it is your fellow member, Purvis. Rules for thee, but not for me, apparently. Is that how it goes, y'all? Very, very laughable. But let's take it back again regarding the personal attacks and how, again, uh, Balti's "The Dumpster Baby" was super adamant at the very end of that clip, saying, "We, again, we request." "We request." Okay? Let's break that down, shall we? So, yes, they do say "we request." So, no, they're not prohibiting you from speaking ill of your government, or anybody else for that matter. So this is, again, this is how they get away with it on the surface, because they're using that word "request." So, no, they're, again, they're not forbidding personal attacks. But, here's the big but, like Michelle's ass. The big but is, "To the novice, to the novice in the audience." They're not gonna pick up on that key word "request." Think about the novice. Think about when y'all first started listening to council meetings, or going to council meetings, or think about when you're maybe like nineteen, twenty, and years old, and you wanna go in there and talk about something that's, that's, you know, grind your gears. And so you wanna be a little bit derogatory to maybe one of the council members up there about something. But you're a novice, you don't get the rules, you don't understand the rules, you just know that you can go over there and air your grievances. Well, then Murray makes that spiel, and while he does say "we request," to the novice's ears, they're not gonna really decipher between whether that is prohibiting or going against the statute. They might not even know what the fuck a statute even is, okay? To the novice, this is very tricky. Like Ms. Forth had said originally in her public comment, this is tricking the public. It's a play on words, because all, like, the person will hear is, they, they don't want you saying public, or bad, bad things about them or anybody else. The word "request" is not gonna resonate with the novice. Not, the novice aside, it's not gonna resonate with probably, I would say, a good eighty-five percent of, of the, of the population, if they were to hear that spiel, if you were to, you know, play that recording to anybody in the United States. Because it, especially if you're in sales or customer service, you understand the gravity of the situation with the mentality of the average Joe. And I hate to say it, but I'm just gonna say it, the average Joe is not highly intelligent. They're just not. The majority of the people walking around, I don't even know how they even remember to breathe. We have a lot of idiots in this country, not to mention Claremont. So are they gonna be fixated on this word "request"? No, they're just gonna hear, you know, "We don't want you talking shit." So not only to the novice, but just to the average Joe, who, again, isn't that highly intelligent, they're not gonna grasp that. They're just not. So to me, it is trickery, it's a play on words, and it absolutely a hundred percent is a deterrent to go up there and speak ill of your government. It is absolutely a deterrent. And you know what? Which, because they are playing, they are playing, you know, on words here, and they, and it is a determinant, or excuse me, a deterrent, I think in essence, that could quite possibly be a viable argument in the court of law. People have argued on less things than one. I really think that could be a viable argument in a court of law. I just do. Because they're, it's trickery, it's a deterrent, they know it, we know it, but again, to the novice and the average Joe who isn't that smart, they're not gonna hear that key word. So, so kudos to Dan for, for his little trickery. And then moving on also, uh, just to let you know what is in that statute specifically, um, that they absolutely do have the power to do, is only four things, and I'm gonna read those four things to you. Um, so a local board or commission may enact rules or policies that, quote, "govern the opportunity to be heard at meetings." So the Florida law, uh, says any such rules or policy must be limited to those that, you ready? Four things. Must be limited to, again, they may enact rules and policies limited to those that, the key word "limited," which limits them only to enact these following policies and rules. One, uh, how long a speaker may speak. So they absolutely have the ability to, to enact a policy or a rule in regard to how long a person shall speak, which in our municipality, it is three minutes. Some municipalities, it's a minute, some it's five. Absolutely have the, the right inability to do that. No ifs, ands, or buts. Two, whether one speaker must be selected to speak for an entire, uh, group or fa, uh, faction on a proposition. That is also their right. So, and I've said this a million times, I feel like I'm a broken record. If you've got forty people that wanna come in and speak in opposition of a development, will they, if, if the, if the council determines, hey, we don't have enough time to listen to forty people, in essence, they're all gonna be actually, uh, just saying the kind, the same thing over and over again, we don't wanna beat a dead horse, so why don't we break it down to like, only twenty of you can speak, or only ten of you may speak, and then you can elect or nominate a floor person to speak on behalf of all of you? They could even do that. Like, we're not gonna listen to all forty of you, but go ahead and elect a floor person to get together and, and collectively come up with what you all wanna say. So they have the absolute right to do that. Uh, and they have the right to, uh, how you need to sign up to speak. A lot of, now, back in the day, we used to have to sign up to speak. Now we don't. We just state our name and address for the record, which I'm not really cool on, um, because I don't really think your address should be out there publicly for everybody to hear, especially if you're in opposition of something, you don't want any retaliation, et cetera, et cetera. So I really feel like we should go back to the signup sheet. Now, you could FOIA request that, that signup sheet, but again, majority of the people in the world aren't that smart, they're not gonna realize that they can even FOIA request. Half of them don't even know what a FOIA is. So there's that. So they absolutely can do that, which they don't do, again, any longer, they don't have you sign up. Uh, and lastly, the, uh, period of time that is designated for public comments. So those are the four things that they absolutely can enact policies and rules on. But nowhere, nowhere does the law say anything about personal attacks, civility, slander, courtesy, or political correctness. I literally could walk up there and slander an elected official. Yeah, because the Florida statute doesn't say anything about that. The statute is thus carefully drawn to comply with the public forum doctrine, which is what Dan was trying to throw out there. The public forum doctrine, which the statute, again, is carefully drawn to comply with. So this is how they're getting away with it, folks. Ms. Forth, everyone, this is how they're getting away with it. And I've always said it's, it's a deterrent, it's a deterrent. And quite frankly, they could be violating because it is, they are tricking the public. And again, I think that would be a viable argument in a court of law, just, just in my opinion. Now, this next clip I'm gonna show you was the butt end of the whole argument with the Florida statute. This is where Murray comes in and compares himself to Jesus. Take a look.
Nowhere in this statement do we say "you cannot." "We request that you be respectful of each other," is all this asking, "we request." Okay? I can say, I don't worry about the names you call me, I've been called names all my life, and this and that, and everything, so it doesn't bother me. It's just, so you can say what you wanna say to me. Uh, I don't know how the rest of the council members feel, but, uh, as you know, I've been up here almost, almost three years now, and you come in here and attack me and call me all kind of names, and I just say, "Thank you," and move on, because, uh, to me, I've learned over the life, I'm sixty-nine years old, I've learned that there's nothing in calling me names, uh, and, um, I don't worry about what people call me, because one of the statements I often say is, uh, they talked about Jesus Christ, and I know he was a better person than me. Okay? Uh, next, uh, anyone else?
You just can't make this shit up, I'm telling you what. So, moving on to this next clip of the shitshow last night, that again was the city council, we are on to reports now from each individual council member. And this particular council member, who is the newest to, to the group, uh, seat four, Chandra Myers, she discusses her schedule for the week and what she is working on implementing. Shortly thereafter, you will see Michelle Pines, who, PS, by the way, the white mug is back, could explain the attack on Chandra. Uh, she wasn't gonna have any reports, but she quickly changed her mind after Chandra said this.
First, I wanna say thank you again, or to all the voters for giving me the opportunity to serve you all. What I have been working on is getting a citizens' budget review committee. This is to assist the council in reviewing the proposed budget to ensure it is consistent with the city council goals and priorities, and that the goals and priorities are being met in the most efficient and effective manner. The other thing I'm working on is, I'm in the process of meeting all the department heads. And then the last thing is that I will be attending the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference, that will be this Thursday in Orlando. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Pines.
Well, I was going to say no report, but in, um, comment in respect to Councilmember Myers', Budget Oversight Committee, uh, city council is elected by the citizens, we are the Budget Oversight Committee. We have, all of our budget meetings are public, public hearings. All citizens are invited to attend those and can get up and speak and voice their opinions and thoughts on it. So as far as a Budget Oversight Committee, I would be against that.
Okay, now, the reason why I stopped right at this point is because I wanna take and show you a close-up of Jim Purvis and what he does, 'cause this is very telling about what happens behind the scenes prior to a council meeting, as far as the back and forth, either telephonically or in person regarding this- either telephonically or in person regarding the city manager and the council members individually. So I'm going to play back a partial, uh, part of that video, and I'm gonna close in on Purvis and what he does specifically after Myers states, uh, that she wants to implement this citizen review board. Watch closely.
Review Committee. This is to assist the council in reviewing the proposed budget to ensure it is consistent with the city council.
Okay, did you, did you see that? Did you see how he slowly looks to his left at Baltis? And how Baltis has that smirk on his face? Did you see that? See, when you notice things, sometimes things are so telling even when they don't say anything. And this is why I really pay attention to these council meetings outside of what the council people actually say, and why it was so important to me when I used to film these, that I actually filmed part of the crowd prior and after a council meeting, cuz it's very telling what you can see. So what this is saying is, we've spoken about this, don't worry, I'm about to say something. Okay? And Baltis, like the little gossip girl that he is, and Purvis basically tells on him in this next clip, that he was told by Baltis about this happening, about her presenting this at the council meeting. So when Baltis visit, visits either telephonically or in person, each individual council meeting prior to the council meeting itself, which this has been an ongoing thing, the city manager generally will do this on a Monday morning, Monday afternoon, prior to the council meeting on Tuesday, or depending upon the council members, uh, their situation with their scheduling, may in fact do it on the day of, which is what happened in this instance with Purvis. Apparently, he spoke to Baltis regarding the council meeting that afternoon, but he literally tells on himself and Baltis about the conversation between Baltis and Purvis, because again, dumpster baby Baltis is a gossip girl. And it'll be a recurring theme in the following clips that I'm going to show you amongst all the council members, because not only does, did Michelle pounce on her first, and then Purvis piled on, but the other two remaining council members also pile on to her, and we'll break that down as well. Okay? So next, you'll, you're gonna see Purvis go off, he's gotta put his two cents in, and again, he tells on himself and Baltis. Take a look.
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I have to be honest, I never heard of any of this until about 3 o'clock this afternoon during my regularly scheduled meeting with the city manager and assistant manager, and it was just casually mentioned that Ms. Myers was talking about possibly bringing this subject up at a workshop in January, perhaps. I also reminded the staff, I had a few things on the workshop to be discussed that preceded possibly her request. This is out of the blue. I'm, I'm, I'm almost speechless because this is a fundamental change that's being floated like a balloon with no forethought, no discussion, no background, no nothing. I will never support something like this, no matter who the presenter is. All you have to do is look at Orange County and see what every single citizens advisory committee has dissolved into. It's an invitation to governmental disaster. You elect us to do that job, because in my experience, every single advisory committee is a committee with an ax to grind. They wanna fund the police, they wanna defund the fire, they wanna increase the medical payments for employees, they want to put a moratorium on all equipment purchases. Everybody has an ax, and that's how they get to be heard. No. You wanna be heard, you work through your elected commission. That's what we're here for, and if we don't do our job, you know what to do.
And apparently, we didn't do it right, because his old ass is still sitting up there, uh, being a titty baby. Okay, so, um, he, he went off the rails a little bit, and it was his opinion, which he, which he is obviously entitled to. I disagree with him, uh, and you'll find out here in another few clips what, uh, Ms. Myers was speaking about. Not citizens that have an ax to grind, we're talking about professional citizens as far as professionals that work in finance. Okay? Uh, I brought this up last year during my campaign, there was an attorney, local attorney that was really good with budgets, I worked with her, she taught me, uh, a lot about budgets, and she came up with some ideas on how to balance the budget, even shared the balanced budget that she worked up on her own time and dime, and shared with the council members, showing them last year that they could actually balance the budget, and they did not need to raise the mileage rate. No one listened to her. No one listened to a professional, uh, super smart attorney that knows budgets. No one listened to her. They wanted to raise the mileage rate because they were too busy listening to dumpster baby Baltis, and just had to raise that mileage rate. So Chandra is not talking about, uh, old lady Jamison down the street and, uh, you know, gawky Becky next door over here, just getting pissed off and wanted to fund any kind of, of staff or, or police department, whatever. That's not what she's talking about, but because they are so narrow-minded and they don't wanna fucking let loose some of their power because they're all on power trips, God forbid you let professionals from the outside come in and help guide you. Last I checked, Disabled Mike didn't know shit about budgets, nor did Purvis, other than what they've seen thus far. Uh, Michelle touts herself as a real estate, uh, into real estate, she's a Realtor, has only sold about five houses in her fucking lifetime, okay? And Murray's worked for the post office. So that doesn't make you a professional in any finance, financial field, nor does it make you a professional on budgets. Okay? Just because you're elected in there to run a city doesn't mean that you can't reach out to the public, the professional public. Again, Purvis, this is not someone with an ax to grind down the street that's pissed off at a cop or a fire guy or someone on staff. These are professionals that want to lend their, um, their critique and their, and, and their knowledge of budgets. Okay? They're looking at this totally wrong, totally narrow-minded, because again, they're on a power trip and they don't wanna let go of that power. Okay? This next clip, we're gonna see Michelle come back in, because Michelle's not done yet. Apparently, what, whatever's in that white mug gets her all kinds of bitchy.
Well, and as, as I stated before, um, all of our budget hearings are, um, public hearings. We don't meet and discuss anything budget together unless it's a public hearing, and every citizen in the city is invited to those hearings and has a right to be there and has a right to speak out, and they do. So if people choose not to attend the meetings and, um, discuss things with us individually, then that is what we're there to do, is represent them. So, once again, city council, we are elected, and we are the Budget Oversight Committee.
What a bitch. And the irony of this whole thing is, in my city council, uh, skits that I do, I actually have Chandra and Pines fighting amongst themselves, uh, real funny clip, I, I posted that up on YouTube if you wanna check that out. So it was almost like I had a crystal ball and I saw this shit coming just days before it actually transpired where they were gonna be going against each other. So, so very, the irony, you can't make this shit up. In this next club, uh, clip, we're gonna be, uh, seeing what Disabled Mike has to say about this, and as per the usual, he, he, he never, he never, uh, ceases to, uh, amaze me with his stupidity. Um, you know, you gotta figure this was coming, that his, uh, unintelligible ramblings of, uh, that, of government and we don't, bigger government, like this, this guy is, is a total idiot, okay? A, a box of rocks actually would have more personality, one, and number two, more smarts. And, and just to see what I'm talking about, you, you gotta look at this clip.
We can. In regards to the citizens' own budget committee, this is just another form of big government trying to get bigger. Um, this is something we don't need. Uh, I echo the same sentiments as councilmembers Purvis and Pines, we don't need this, um, it just takes more staff. We are the ones that, uh, you know, has that oversight. Um, I don't believe we need to go down that road. Um, as Councilman, uh, Purvis says, it just gets bigger, the government gets bigger. We don't need that. So, um, at least I don't. And, um, so this is one of the things that, uh, uh, it was proposed, and this is not gonna work, and I don't believe it's gonna work on behalf of the city. So I'm, I'm totally against it. Thank you.
I don't even know where to begin with this one. Okay, so, bigger government, well, we don't, bigger go, how is this bigger government? Are, are you half-cocked in the brain? That wave must've hit you super hard in the Coast Guard. Fight me. Um, how in the world does this mean bigger government, Disabled Mike? How does this mean bigger government? We're talking about citizens. Last time I checked, citizens aren't government unless they're elected and they actually are involved in, like, they are part of the fucking government. Everybody outside of the elected official arena is a fucking just average Joe citizen. How is this bigger, bigger, all, all bigger, bigger, uh, bigger government? I, I echo the sentiments, ooh, that's a big word for you. How is this bigger government, sir? It's fucking citizens. And Purvis, bless his decrepit, disgusting heart, never said anything about it would make bigger government. So for you to even say, you know, I, I'm just gonna go ahead and say what Purvis said, you know, you, I agree with Purvis, bigger guy, but, Purvis never fucking said anything about bigger government. He just didn't, it just didn't happen. So I don't know if he's sharing in on whatever's in Michelle's white mug, cuz he is drinking some stuff up there, I don't know what it is. Uh, or he literally, this, this, um, stupidity is, is far more serious than I thought going on in his head. Bigger government. And I, I don't, I just don't think it's gonna, I don't need it, well, at least I don't. Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, and then he looks over, but, but, did I do good? Did I do good, Papa? Did I do good, Papa? Did I do good? Did I do what you said you wanted me to say? Did I, did I say it? I'm gonna reiterate that. Baltis speaks to the council members prior to every council meeting, that's just what, that's, that's what they do. Darren did it years ago, Darren Gray, every, every city council, or excuse me, city manager meets with a city council member, eh, eh, all the time, before every council meeting, and they discuss the agenda. This all was discussed with each and every council member. After Baltis spoke with, uh, Chandra, he went and he tattled, oh, to all the other council members, and then they did a pre-game, they were pre-gaming on how they could oppose this publicly and shame Chandra. Love her or hate her, shame her. Totally disgusting behavior. Disgusting of, of, of elected officials amongst themselves. Don't be surprised if they gang up on her and try to have her removed and try to censor her, her on stupid shit, and then end up trying to get her removed and vote her out, the island. Don't be surprised, cuz it's coming. Have I been wrong yet about my, my little, uh, you know, ideas about how things are gonna go? No. Usually I'm not, and it's scary, cuz I really wish I was wrong, but I, I see it coming. Might not be, might not be tomorrow, next week, or next month, but it's coming. Or they're gonna try real hard in the background to make it happen. They all piled up on her at the behest of the city manager, I guarantee it, because none of these asshats even knew she was gonna say that. They didn't even know she was gonna say that and ask for it to be put on a workshop. They didn't even know that until dumpster baby gossip girl got on the horn and told all of them, and then they pre-gamed together on how to attack her publicly. Fucking gross. Baltis, you're a fat piece of shit. Moving on to the next clip, we're gonna see Chandra come back at them and actually defend herself and her reason behind this committee. And again, like I said earlier, she's talking about professionals, not just some other dumpster baby like Baltis coming, uh, up into the committee. Take a look.
Yes, ma'am.
I find it interesting that you all don't think the citizens should be able to look at the budget and give some input. We do have, we have people who are quite qualified. This is just to give insight, because I feel like what I learned on the campaign is that a lot of citizens do not trust us. They do not trust the city, they have a lot of misgivings, they feel like money is being spent grossly, and doing this would help show them that it's not being spent grossly. We don't have to take their ideas, this is opening up, because this is the citizens, we work for the citizens of this community, not for each other, that, we're here to work for them. And what the people that I've spoke with wanted this, so this is why I brought this forth, because I said I was going to. Now, I'm sad to hear that you all don't feel that way, but you have a right to your opinion, but I do know that the citizens that I spoke with were in support of that.
Good job. Ha, I 100% agree. And she's not, she's not wrong. But wait a minute, in this next clip, apparently, whatever is in Michelle's white mug isn't completely dried up yet. No, it's still giving her some liquid courage. So now she goes in for a third time, this time for the jugular.
Every citizen in this city has the right and are given the opportunity, opportunity to be involved in every single public budget meeting and hearing that we have right here in these chambers. There, everyone is notified through social media and, and different avenues here in the council meetings, um, live streamed when the budget hearings are scheduled, and everybody can attend, anybody in this city can attend those meetings and get up and speak, ask questions, give their thoughts, give their opinions, provide their knowledge, and we listen to them. That is what we are here to do. And I have heard, I've heard just the opposite of what you have heard. I have heard nothing but accolades for how the budget has transpired over the last three years under the leadership of our current city staff, the transparency that they have shown, and all the work that all of our departments have done to fine-tune their expenses and, and what they do, which trickles down into, well, it doesn't really trickle down, it trickles up, into the services that are provided to the citizens. But these budget hearings are exactly what the citizens have and the tools that they can use to let us know where they feel like we need to take the budget at that point.
Well, with all due respect, some of the citizens cannot come to the budget hearings because the budget hearings have been in the middle of the day, and quite a few of our citizens work during the day.
And that is what we are here for. They voted for us to represent them, and that is what we, and they put their trust in us when they vote for us, including you, and they vote for us and put us on this council, they're putting their trust in us to have their best interest at heart, to make sure that the services that this city are providing are the services that they need, first of all, safety, and that is what we are here to do.
What a giant bitch. So unprofessional of her to act like that to her fellow councilwoman publicly. Quite disgusting behavior. And, and, and I think she's a liar, because I personally went out and knocked on doors when I was campaigning last year for four hours, specifically in- when I was campaigning last year for four hours, specifically in Legends. And I didn't come across one person that told me that they had absolute confidence in our council members. None of them. Some specifically even called out Michelle. So I don't know where Michelle is getting her accolades from. What, limpy? Her live-in lover? Her white mug maybe is talking to her late at night? Good job, Michelle. Oh, you're so good. You're so pretty, so pretty. What, what is happening in her brain? I call her a liar. Chandra is absolutely 100% right. People in this town, more than not, do not trust our city council members. So, yeah, accolades, my ass. Keep, keep drinking your, whatever's in your white mug there, sweetheart. Now, in this next clip, in the final clip of the actual council meeting that I'm going to show you for this evening, we have Murray piling on. Yes, we have one more, because, you know, we got to get everybody in on it, because Baltis told everybody in that pre-game phone call. He doesn't do it as vile as, as Purvis and Pines, or, well, no, he is stupid. But then, at the end of his comment, he specifically states that it's just not going to be put on the workshop agenda. It's just not. So I didn't know that he could make that determination on his own without taking a vote, but we'll, we'll take a look. You'll see what I'm talking about.
Budget Oversight Committee and everything, I was going to suggest bringing it to a workshop before, what I'm hearing from other council members, that you don't think it's needed. I somewhat, I was willing to sit down and do a workshop on it, so we can talk about it, since we wasn't, we hadn't really had a chance to talk to, talk to any, each of us about this. But I'm somewhat in agreement, I don't think it's needed. That's what we are elected to do. I know I read my campaign on physical responsibilities, so that one of the things I wanted to make sure is the public understand that that is one of the jobs, and that's what you elect us to do. State requires us to have two public hearings on our budget before we approve the budget and, and, and any adjustments in taxes and everything. That's state requirement. So it's nothing like we doing anything behind the scene or anything. You all, we have to advertise those two, two hearings and everything, so public have plenty of opportunity to try to make arrangements to get here. But one of the things we've done since I've got elected assistant, Mr. Baltis has been here, we, we went step further. Well, the last couple of years, we're in the budget process the way it was years ago, where basically, we, the council were presented a budget, and, and it was a public, required public hearings, and they went over it real, real quick, within 30 minutes, and next thing you know, they were voting on it, on the budget. We've taken it a step further, and that's for transparency and to make sure the public understand that we are not trying to hide anything and give the public opportunity. We come in here, for the last couple of years, we've taken this budget, we've sat down with every department head and everything here in this, in this chamber, from 9 to 6, 9 to 5, 9 to 6, all day long, and we have every department head coming here and explaining their budget to us, and it's open to the public. Anyone in the public can come here, ask questions or whatever. I think, Ms. Myers, you were there at one of them last year, during the process this past year. I think you, you was a little surprised on what all went into, into the process, but not only did we do that, but we came back a few, a few weeks later and did the second one. So we have not only been doing the two that's required by the state, year before last, we actually did five budget hearings, okay, open to the public. This year, we only did the four, but we did the eight, nine-hour budget on that one day, and we came back a few weeks later and did another four or five-hour budget hearing, open to the public. And then we had the two-state requirements. So with that being said, I really don't think we need, need to do Oversight Committee, because that's what, that's what we are elected to do. We are the Oversight Committee. We don't need to be trying to get rid of our responsibility. That's what we are here to do, to look at it. But I do believe we need to be more transparent to the public, and that's why we have changed the process, and that's why we've done what we've done in the past, and opened it up to the public and hold these all-day budget hearings. And it's, it's, I enjoy it, you get a chance to see the department head, and they have to explain to us everything that's on their budget. And then we make a determination whether it's needed or not. And you have a right, if you want to attend it, you have a right to put input and say, hey, we need, we, you need to make sure they get this budget item, no, they don't need the budget item. That's what we're here for. Okay? So, hearing of the comments, I guess I won't suggest that we put it in the workshop. I know we couldn't have did a workshop in January, because I think our workshop agenda is pretty much full for January, but I was going to suggest February, but if you all don't fear like it's necessary, that's fine. We will move on down the road.
I see no need for more.
Oh, there you have it. Murray made the final decision to poo-poo Myers to get on the agenda for the next workshop. And then, of course, Purvis dominus ominous it. So I guess it's a done deal now. I really thought that that was quite inappropriate and unprofessional. They should have taken a proper vote, but, you know, you know, that's just how they are in, in, in the world of Shadyville that, that's going on here in the shit pit. So with that being said, I'm going to end tonight's podcast with that clip that I started tonight's podcast with. And in case you didn't understand the context of it, I just went out there to City Hall last night, and I questioned Pines in regard to a pending lawsuit against the city, as well as Jim Purvis and his official capacity for malicious libel against a citizen. And really funny thing that happened when I started rolling was Purvis crossed over in front of my screen like a Bigfoot sighting. It, it was totally fucking hilarious. Anyways, with that being said, y'all have a great night, and see you soon. Councilwoman Pines, do you have a statement about the pending lawsuit against your fellow councilmember Purvis right here in the city regarding malicious libel? Do you have a statement? Are you afraid you're next with the lawsuit, because there's pending allegations against you for harassment and targeting?
Not afraid, thank you.
Why did you attack your fellow member, Councilmember Myers tonight regarding a city, or, excuse me, a citizen budget oversight committee? Are you afraid of accountability? Or did you attack her at the behest of your city manager? You were pretty vile to her up there. No comment on the pending lawsuit? None? You're not afraid you're next? No comment? None at all? And there's your fellow councilmember, people. Can't even answer a question. Bye, have a good evening! Good luck on the lawsuit!